Welcome to attend at that particular point in time. But, Mr. Chairman, that would be why I pulled that and so that we would have that front and center.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sure this has made former Judge Beth Keever very happy because she was definitely an advocate for this Veterans Court and as well as many other people. So, is there a motion to approve this, Mr. Adams?
I will. And as you said that with Judge Keever, we would like to send to Judge Lou Olivero, who sits as the judge in treatment court, and his staff, they do a tremendous amount of work, so I want to make sure of that. But I would move that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Item three.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, item number three is consideration of request to relinquish easement rights. Mr. Moorefield.
The memo that's attached describes this as a request from CRA Timber Management, LLC. George Armstrong, I believe, is the name of the gentleman that is either owns that or is a representative of that. He's the person who has had the contact through Lonny Player, who's his lawyer, and Larry King, the surveyor. They are re- currently, the county owns a five and a quarter acre tract of land off Fisher Road. It's access to Fisher Road is by a 60-foot wide public easement that adjoins it, and the county's access is through a dirt driveway, basically that the county, I guess, maintains itself. In any event, the property, that property has been annexed into the Town of Hope Mills incident to the development of a large subdivision on property on the back of that parcel. The CRA, the Timber Management Company, is asking the county to relinquish all its rights, title, and interest in the, in the public easement and in exchange for CRA granting the county a 60-foot wide access in fee sent parcel to the, to a street that it has constructed called McKinnon Farm Road. It's a, is in the town's street system. It's a fully paved road with access to Fisher Road, and I think they're either proposing where they put a stoplight in there. I haven't seen it, but I think that's in the plans anyway. But in any event, that's if the board wishes to do that, then the resolution that's proposed would accomplish that, and then staff could finalize this with the exchange of, of deeds for this transaction. There's a plat prepared that's attached to the memo. It's a preliminary plat, but it describes the location of the easement, the county's parcel, and if the street is closed, there's an argument that the county would acquire six, a 30-foot, 30-foot of that easement adjoining its property, and the county's boundary on that easement's about 400 feet. So, that's what, what this is about, I think, and the CRA wishes to actually use that property as part, deed that property to its homeowners association incident to the, to the development of this subdivision.
Okay. Any questions for the attorney? Mr. Adams?
And I read that they are already partially on the easement.
The, yeah, the street that they have constructed, we actually, the county would actually have access to that street through the existing 60-foot easement, not the whole length of it, but for a good portion of the distance.
What is it they propose to do with the easement?
They're going to ask the Town of Hope Mills to close it. It would extinguish it.
Close that, that?
That 60-foot wide public easement. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, what does that do? I mean, I just?
It just wipes it out.
I, I, well, I understand that, but in essence of access or whatever in terms of the public, what does that? I mean, what, in terms of the easement, what does it, in terms of, it's an easement so you can get either onto the property, off the property, or some utilities or whatever. There was a reason for the easement to start with. What was the reason for the easement to start with?
This was, this, all this property was owned by a textile mill. I'm thinking maybe it was Dixie Orange, yeah, back in the 50s. This was done back in the 60s. Apparently, there was a separate parcel that the textile mill company owned. I mean, this easement's like 2,700 feet in length. It's a long, it's a-
Right. I'm just trying to figure out. It had to be a reason for it. I don't know what that is.
My, I'm told, and county's not involved in the closure. I am told by Mr. Player that the only other property served by this easement has already done this.
Well, that don't make it, I mean, that's fine, but-
I'm just telling you, I don't, you know, I don't know what the issues are for the town as far as closing. I mean, but it's, it's in the town's jurisdiction. And I have asserts to title or anything on it. Right now, we have got 400-foot of boundary on a 60-foot wide easement, I mean, with our, with our border. If, the town actually can't close that unless this is done because the, it would make our parcel land locked. That's, that's the reason they're requesting to do this.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying, you know, if they're just going to close it, who's going to maintain it? I mean, it, it has to be maintained, or we can make it green space, or we could make it, it's a whole lot of stuff we can do with it, but just because somebody wants to take it and close it doesn't make sense to me without some kind of reason as to behind that.
The reason for it is see, the, the owner of this land, the CRA Timber Management Company, propose, wants to take the land that this easement lies on and deed it to the homeowners association with the subdivision for landscaping and open space to meet the subdivision requirements in the, for the Town of Hope Mills. That's, that's my understanding of what, why they want to do this.
Okay. Because none of that was in there as to what they were going to do with it. I mean, I didn't have any of that.
And I don't have anything.
And I would like to have some further information. I mean, it's just a law, a large easement to close.
And if I had, if I had asked for that in writing and I, and I didn't get it, so that, that's, that's-
Well, I would ask to pull it until we get that because I just, it's a long easement. That's a long easement for some purpose that, you know, I just, just because somebody wants to take it and close it just doesn't make sense to me.
Let me shed a little light on that if I can.
Yes.
Because I live out that way, so I'm familiar with the property. The only house on that road existing now is a group home owned by the county.
Okay.
The, the paved portion that's coming out, they do intend to stall, install a traffic light there. They have already done this with the Board of Education. They've given them access to the paved roads from the, and you can see this partly on the map, at the, at the rear of the faculty parking lot. They have closed the entrance off of Fisher Road to the parking lot. They did that back in the summer before school started. And what they're proposing to do is give access of that group home, which is the only house there, to the pavement. In other words, a driveway out of the group home to the pavement rather than having to go down a dirt path, which is what it is now. And it makes sense as to what they're proposing. And then that way, it's safer for, for the transportation of the people that are coming out of that group home to come into the regular paved highway and to get out on the light at Fisher Road as it was for the school system to have their faculty going out on paved road and have better access. And of course, it's all at Hope Mills, really, it's what it amounts to anyway. So, with that, I had my say. And Mr., I just want to try to further explain.
But, and, and Mr. Chairman, that makes sense to me. See, now, you've given me some reason that I can do that, but what was in that just wasn't enough information. So, with that information, I really don't have a problem because now I've got what I needed to know, and that, I would like to see that. If that was in, in, in the whole discussion of it, would have made it a lot clearer to me. So, thank you for that information.
Yeah, real quick, just now that there hasn't been many questions, there's no need for this easement as far as you can tell for the county at this time, right?
Yeah, it's a, there isn't identified deed for this easement. Yes, sir.
Yeah, but do we have a reason to retain it?
Not with this new access. No, sir.
With, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve easement. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
And it goes back on the tax rules, right? Because we deeding it to them?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Item number four, Mr. Chairman, is consideration of adoption of the 2016 Board of Commissioner regular meeting dates. In your packet, there's a memorandum from the clerk to the board. I do want to point out, it's been the practice of this board, when a holiday falls on a Monday of a meeting date, we normally move the meeting to the following day. That occurs in 2016 in two instances. The first will be in January when we observe the Martin Luther King Junior Day holiday and as well in September when we observe Labor Day. So, those meetings will be moved to the following day. I do want to point out that normally, we cancel the first meeting in March due to the NACO Legislative Conference. That will not be necessary this year because the conference actually occurs in February. So, we have scheduled a meeting for the first Monday in March. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? A motion to approve, Mr. Keith?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fairclaw. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous. Number five, item number five is nominations to boards and committees.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to nominate Mr. Cheryl Jernigan, who is the Farm Advisory Board's recommendation to replace Wayne Carter Jr., who is not eligible, and that we reappoint also Wayne Beard and Vance Tyson, who are eligible for reappointment.
Any other nomination? All right. Item B. Nominations to the Fayetteville-Cummins County Economic Development Corporation.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask for the public, this is a very, there's a lot of interest on this. Maybe you could go over what our responsibilities are and how many appointments we have and how that will work?
I'll be happy to. We have, the proposal is for three people to be appointed by the county commissioners, and three will also be appointed by the City of Fayetteville. Our process is a little different than the City of Fayetteville's. We nominate at one meeting, approve at the next meeting. We have one seat, which is a one-year term, and that is proposed to be an elected official. The, the second seat is one that would be a two-year term, and the third seat is one that would be a three-year term, and all of those seats are subsequently eligible for a three-year term on reappointment. So, you have staggered terms. In other words, initially, the person that's appointed to the one-year seat would, and of course, it's elected official, so it could change periodically, but they would be appointed to a, a continuing three-year term, or you could change for an elected official if you wanted to. The second seat is for two-years' terms and could be reappointed to a three-year term, which that person would serve five years, all total, and, and then you'd have to appoint somebody else. And then the third one is a three-year term that would be eligible for a three-year appointment. That person would serve six years, and at that time, that person would come off the board unless the City of Fayetteville decided to point him back. But this way, they're going to do the same thing with their appointments, so they have, will have staggered terms initially, and eventually, it will all be, work out in its own phase.
Would you like us to nominate for the term or just nominate to put into the pile?
I think it would be appropriate to, in my opinion, Ms. Cannon has attended a meeting to, to nominate for the term.
I, I agree.
Okay. So, are there nominations for the one-year seat? Mr. Keith?
I'm, I'm sorry. I had another nomination. Go ahead.
Ms. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, for the initial seat, which would keep the representation as it is now with our chairman or the chairman's designee, I'd like to nominate the chairman for the one-year term.
Okay. And that's the incoming chairman because it doesn't begin to January 1st anyway.
The chairman or the chairman's designee, yes.
Okay. All right.
For, for seat number one.
All right. Any other nominees? All right. Lost my place here.
Two-year term.
The two-year term. Is there nominees for the two-year term, Ms. Counsel? Or Mr. Keith, I'm sorry.
Mr. Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very, very important, we, we put a lot of work with, between the two governments and a number of different agencies on here, and I think it's important that we have some, some history of economic development. At that time, we had a, an application come in for Mr. Doug Byrd, who has a lot of experience in economic development over the past couple of years, and for the two-year term, I think it'd be important on the protocols for Mr. Doug Byrd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other nominees? Mr. Heathens, you're next.
Yes, and I'd like to nominate Jerome Scott with the insurance firm here.
Okay.
Ms. Counsel?
Yes. I think it's very important that we have some kind of continuity on this board, and the present chair of the board is Mr. Tim Richardson, and I would like to keep Mr. Richardson on this board, please, and I'd like to nominate him for the two-year term.
All right. Anybody else? All right. The next one then, I guess, is the three-year term. Ms. Counsel?
And for the three-year term, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Juanita Pilgrim, who has an extensive background in organizations and also with her small, her family business as well as having served this board as an ambassador to go to bring Nita Gelatin. And we sent her to Canada. We also sent her to Arizona. She has a good, strong background in leadership, management, and I think she would be an asset to this board.
Mr. Keith, did you have a nominee?
I, I had a question whether it would be appropriate to nominate someone who, for the other term. No question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any, anybody else have any nominees? All right.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Keith?
I, Mr. Richardson was nominated for a two-year term, but would it be appropriate to also nominate him for the three-year term also since it's going to be individually voted on? And I understand that that is an odd question.
That is an odd question, and I would say yes, he could be nominated for both of them. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. There are two separate seats. Of course, he couldn't be selected with-
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, and I don't want to mess it up, but, Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Tim Richardson for a three-year term.
Ms. Counsel?
Let me remind the board that we were supposed to be looking at representatives of our entire community and in all aspects of our community, so I would appreciate it. There's only one woman being nominated. I just put it out there, okay?
Okay. All right. Mr. Fairclaw?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I guess, who, who took, these applicants were taken by whom? Clerk's office?
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office, okay. And, and these people who are on this list that we have, that's the sum total of applicants? Were these the qualified applicants? Were these the screened applicants? What is this?
It's the sum total of all the-
This is everybody that applied?
Yes, sir.
But there's question, and I'm not questioning the nomination, but Jerome Scott did not have an application on file. Is that correct, Ms.?
I don't believe he applied.
I don't see Douglas Byrd either, do I?
Douglas Byrd did apply late. He did, Douglas Byrd and the lady that was on the PWC board did apply late.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
I don't have that informa-, so, so we did have two people apply late that-
They got it in in time. It was dated before the 27th. The deadline was the 27th.
Okay, but we don't have that information?
Yes.
We do have that information.
We did. It came to us in an email on Friday.
Okay. All right. I missed the email.
One was put in the US mail. I think they got here late, and then the other one got there just in the-
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that email summary, or I raced it or went to spam or something. I didn't know. So, Jerome Scott did not apply then at all, period.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm sorry, you have my leg.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And light of the fact that I was under the impression that he had applied, speaking with him, since he did not apply, we withdraw his name. Now, let me ask you this, the commissioner, B.R. King, a former commissioner, B.R. King, did he apply?
Yes.
So, I nominate B.R. King.
Okay.
For, for the same position that I nominated. To your position.
You're withdrawing Mr. Scott's name and adding Mr. King's name?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else got any other nominations before we go on for any of the appointments? All right. I see none. We'll move on to the Tourism Development Authority. One vacancy.
I'm sorry, my screen went blank.
It was Vivek Tanden.
Vivek Tanden.
I'll make that motion.
There's been a motion for Vivek Tanden for the Tourism Development Authority. Is there any other nominations?
This was a specific for a, for the hotel motels. Is that correct? I think so.
A S.
And I, I think I saw, he, how many times has, I guess they rotate the same people kind of, I guess there's only so many hotels and motels in Fayetteville, and so, I, I guess I would ask the county attorney that some of these hotels in our community, and I, and I don't have anything, any problem with your nomination, but I just want to get some clarification. Some of them are nationally owned, so that, do you have to be the owner of the hotel motel, or if you are a national chain, can you designate somebody that's local to, that might fit within, within there? I don't know what the, what the legislation talks about. You have to be an owner.
The statute, the statute simply says that nominated by hotels over 100 rooms, hotels less than 100 rooms, so it's, anybody's guess how that could come about.
So, if one of the national chains decide to nominate somebody, I guess they could if it's a, like, you know?
My, my understanding is that it's been handled by some, a local hotel association. Is anyone familiar with that, that they somehow work it out, but I, it's not part of the statute, and I've not seen any bylaws or anything that address that anyway, so it, the, the way the statute's written, it's, it's very, it, it's very ambiguous as to how, how it should be done.
So, we're not necessarily bound by whatever recommendation they send over if one of those other entities did that? That's just, I'm just trying to figure that. I don't know.
I think the Board of Commissioners is bound to appoint someone representing hotels over 100 rooms and hotels under 100 rooms. Yes, sir. I mean, not, not for this seat, but for this, I guess this seat's-
Right. I mean, this seat's, yeah, I mean, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and if I understand the, any other nominees I should ask, Mr. Keith?
No nominee, but I'm, I might be able to bring some clarification. State, state statute, which we have a very, very restrictive state statute, and the makeup of this board is very unorthodox, and it is ambiguous. It says a representative nominated by hotels and motels within the county, which have excess or minimum of 100 rooms subject to occupancy tax. The, I, I think there was an internal, internal understanding that they would have to be owners, and that's what we have on there now, or all of them are owners in some way or fashion of the, of the hotels that they are representing.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
Internal by whom? I mean, who?
I believe the T.
I mean, who made that? I mean, if it's not in the statute, then there has to be some agreement or something in writing, not just, hey, if you, you know, and maybe you can give me some clarification.
I think there's some, maybe some perception that if you're a hotel owner and you live in this community, you may be more vested in the community than the manager from a very large chain. So, they have probably leaned more toward someone who has invested financially in the community as an owner as opposed to somebody who's just managing a hotel for a large chain.
And that's certainly Vivek's qualification, not only an owner, but Spring Lake several and invested in the community. That's the reason I nominated D.D. All right. Any other nominees? Are we to approve the chairman of that board? Do we have to approve that, or is that just for information? Mr. Billy Wellens has been chairperson, appointed as chairperson by the board. Do we have to approve that?
It's my understanding, yes, that that's-
I believe it's actually a board mission appointment. I think they're making a recommendation to.
Okay, I'll move that we appoint Mr. Wellens as chairperson.
Second.
All right. Any further, we got a way vote on that one, right? We don't have to bring it back?
It's set up as an appointment.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. No further discussion. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Wellens is the new chairperson. Okay. Brings us down, Mr. Fairclaw, to the appointments, and I think, Mr. Keith, you had something you wanted to say before we do that.
Yes. Item 7A, I'd like to pull the name, the name Henry Eisenbarth and John J. Wyatt, please.
All right. Mr. Fairclaw?
Mr. Chairman, seeing that after Mr. Keith's move, there are an equal number of appointments for the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee as there are vacancies, so I would move that we appoint the following at-large citizens, Ora Bithia, Alexia Fields, and Barrett Low, and those, that those appointments to the Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee be made by acclamation.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Oh, he said by acclamation, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
I do.
Yeah, do that second.
All right. Brings to the last item in closed session for economic development matter and attorney-client matters. Is that correct?
Be two attorney-client matters.
Two attorney-client matters and one economic development?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Some motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Second?
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Kelly, good job.
Thank you. Very good.
Very good.